The Tuesday, fourteen Board of Selectmen Workshop Survey Results Meeting to Order. I have a couple of pieces of business to conduct before the Board. The first is, and since we have school committee here, we have a quorum of school committee. The matter of the reappointment of the vacant-
I was calling the school committee to alert.
Thank you.
Library.
Thank you.
Hit the library.
Library here?
Judges are in.
Thank you. The, my understanding is the posting for the vacancy on the school committee was made today. Actually, I should probably use this. That's for here, right? The posting for the opening on school committee was made today, and my understanding is that that will close on December eleventh, I believe. The question is, what's the will of the school committee in terms of having the appointment meeting that would follow?
Well, I sent you a letter. December eighteenth is in the letter I sent you.
Okay, December eighteenth.
Any comment from the Board, plus or minus?
Is that the regular, the regular school committee?
It is. Regularly.
I mean, I could make it. I think it's, I think it's important to kind of fill this before we get into the budget season, so I can make myself available for that.
All right, good. Consider it a date, so.
What was, could you repeat the date again, Chuck?
December eighteen.
Eighteen. I imagine at your place, right?
Yeah, it's an away game.
Yeah. Right.
The eighteenth is a-
Seven thirty?
Seven.
Oh, that's twenty sixteen.
All right, I have a couple of statements to read, and then we'll move directly to the subject at hand. I have two statements this evening. One, the matter of an open meeting law complaint filed by Ms. Emily Mon. Ms. Mon filed a complaint on November ninth after the Board of Selectmen had already posted its agenda for this meeting tonight. On Friday at two thirty-four P.M., the Board posted a revised agenda that included discussion of the complaint. It's important to note that while private businesses and the Commonwealth observe Veterans' Day on Friday, the legal day holiday was a Saturday, thus, the Board timely posted this agenda item for this evening more than forty-eight hours prior to tonight. And even if Friday were a legal holiday, the Board can still properly discuss the complaint this evening. First, I personally did not learn of the complaint until Friday and therefore could not have reasonably anticipated this matter before then. Second, upon learning of this complaint, I asked for the agenda to be updated immediately to reflect this topic for this evening. And third, the discussion of the complaint is time-sensitive. This Board must respond to the complaint within fourteen business days. If the Board waited until its next meeting to review the complaint, it would only have a few days before a response would be due. In my view, therefore, the Board should properly discuss this topic now to ensure that it has enough time to respond properly. On the matter of the complaint itself, the complaint alleges that a quorum of the Board improperly deliberated outside a posted meeting during the Finance Committee's meeting on Wednesday, October eleventh, that was the financial forum, where the town's fiscal year nineteen budget was being discussed, period. It is the town's policy that when a quorum of a public body anticipates attending another body's meeting, another public body's meeting, the visiting body will post notice in case a quorum does deliberate. Since it was possible that a quorum of the Board would attend the Finance Committee's meeting, town staff were directed to post notice of the meeting per this policy. However, it was not the intent of this Board to deliberate during the October eleventh meeting. As Monday was Columbus Day, town staff posted this notice on Tuesday morning less than the required forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. The open meeting law specifically permits a quorum of a public body to attend a meeting of another public body without posting notice, so long as the visiting members communicate only by open participation and do not deliberate. For that specific reason, I made a statement at the beginning of the October eleventh meeting that while the Board had a quorum present, the Board had not posted notice of its meeting and would not be deliberating. The members of the Board therefore sat apart from each other during the meeting. I sat in the first row next to no one. In addition, the Finance Committee did not provide the Selectmen with any special opportunity to address them, and we were allowed to participate only at the discretion of the committee chair. Furthermore, when Barry and I did speak, we did not respond to or comment upon each other's prior comments. We also did not vote nor make any decisions regarding the town budget during that meeting. Despite this, the Board recognizes that the statements made during the meeting may have crossed the line in deliberation, such that a proper posting would have been required. The Board apologizes for any violation that may have occurred. The Board has made and continues to make a strong commitment to transparency and to compliance with open meeting law, and in a personal note, I don't matter, it doesn't matter to me how big a group is or how small or how new or how old, you follow the rules. And on this point, I apologize. We again pledge to ensure that all meetings of the Board are posted more than forty-eight hours prior to a meeting and that a Board member will refrain from any proper deliberation when attending a meeting which is not posted. In order to provide additional transparency, the Board will create minutes for the October eleventh meeting. For those interested, the meeting was also recorded and may be watched online via RCTV's link on YouTube. Please mail, mail the town manager for the link to the meeting. Of particular note, this Board is required to respond to the complaint within fourteen business days. I would request a motion from this Board to vote to authorize Town Council's office to make a timely response to the complainant.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any further discussion on the proposed motion?
Is this up to Town Council as to what is going to be said in the response?
It will be, it will be reviewed with myself, and if the Board is interested, I can make it available more generally. I think it's a fairly straightforward response.
Yeah, I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe any deliberation occurred. I do believe there was an agenda item that the FinCom had put on their own agenda regarding comments from the Board of Selectmen for that evening. That was not an agenda item that we put on. And in fact, I believe Bob declined our participation in that explicitly that evening. So, from my point of view, there, there was no violation.
Understand, but we have an obligation to respond to the complainant and the complaint within the time prescribed, so.
That's my input, for what it's worth.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to sort of make a, a sort of a personal apology on it before we vote. I think it was when I raised my hand in response to a comment from a member of the audience, that's what sort of triggered the, what some would call deliberation. To me, this is prob, that was probably the twenty-fourth financial forum in a row that I have attended, either as a Selectman or before that as a FinCom member. To me, it was another financial forum, this time more important, dealing with, you know, critical finances. The other twenty-three in a row that I went to, I showed up and I participated. This was no different. I didn't realize that we weren't posted. I certainly wasn't deliberating with my colleagues, although I think by me raising my hand to say something, it's what triggered this. So I want to give a personal apology by taking up a lot of valuable time and oxygen on trying to deal with this. But, you know, again, I looked at it as just a way of, you know, people, people want to know what their Selectmen say. We weren't posted. Bob, I'm going to attend every financial forum going forward, so, you know, it takes two seconds, let's just post it, and we don't have to worry about it again. But again, I apologize and didn't mean to deliberate with anybody just responding to a comment from an audience member. Thank you.
Any further comments?
John, I'm, I'm, I mean, I, I listened, I just listened to your statement for the first time, and where you spoke for the, for the Board, it's a little hard for me to vote on something that, that I haven't had a chance to look at ahead of time, so I just ask, moving forward, that, you know, if you respond for the Board, unless I'm missing something, to shoot it out to us so we can have, I can have a chance to repair and look at it, et cetera. As for the meeting, I looked at it as an opportunity not to have to speak, so there was a bit of relief on my part. And, and, but your, everything else sounds sincere and appropriate to me.
Just for, just for the record, Andy, it's guilt by association. If one does it, we all do it, so.
I understand. It's just that your statement was read out representing the Board, and, and, and I, I don't know about you guys, but I hadn't had a chance to take a look at it.
I think the response is relatively straightforward. I understand your point.
Agreed, agreed.
Okay.
Will the response be brought back to the Board since there is time for it to-
I don't, unless there's a reason not to, for whatever other, I don't see a reason not to bring it back to the Board.
That's fine, though.
Any other comments?
I'm clear, I didn't make the meeting.
Okay, yeah, you're right. For once, John, you're out of trouble, okay? All right, all of us in favor of the motion? Five, zero. First of all, thank you for attending tonight. Thank you for those watching at home on RCTV. I want to make a few opening comments regards the survey. First of all, the survey was designed by the Board of Selectmen, and I want to give particular recognition to my colleague on my left. Barry did an excellent job reviewing the finished document and making sure that the questions were well crafted and on point. The survey ran from August through September fifth. They included quantitative questions, how many, how much, when, where, and qualitative comments where users could free, free-flow anything that they wished. The answers will be segregated, as you'll see here momentarily, by the cohort, by the group, based on what the respondent indicated for their October sixteenth position on the original override question. There were comments permitted, I believe, for each question. There were thirteen questions total, twelve with multiple choice, plus a thirteenth as general comments, which unfortunately was distributed early. Tonight, we'll review the results from the first twelve questions. The responses have not been provided to the public in advance by design. We want you all, both here and at home, to see the presentation live, given at once by the same presenter, using an interactive database. Jane Miller, Redding's Business Administrator, and for the record, moderator from the town of Tewksbury, has done this multiple times with myself, Mr. Halsey, Mr. Berman, so she knows where the questions are likely to be, and I'll, I'll trust her judgment. For her presentation, I'm going to ask that there be no questions, that we let Jane complete the entire pass-through all twelve questions without interruption. The principle being, many of the questions you have will be answered, and those which aren't will be given a chance in the second segment to go through point by point for the elected boards. If, we know this process is likely to take a couple of hours. It took us three and a half the first time we went through it. Again, once complete, we will turn to question, each question in series, to FinCom, School Committee, and Library Trustees and the Board if there are any, any other questions. Time permitting, we'll take questions from the others in the audience. For those at home or those who have a question that's not answered, please jot it down or send it to the town manager at an address that we'll provide by the end of the evening. Again, we're reviewing the questions. I should note that there are approximately seventeen hundred comments that have never been seen. The comments you've seen are the responses to question thirteen, which you've not seen is the seventeen hundred comments for questions one through twelve. Many of these comments are pointed. The Board of Selectmen received criticism from several, including, and it was not reserved to us, other elected groups within the town were also singled out. It will be tempting for many to go immediately to the comments, and they are in unedited form, and they will be provided to the public. Some of the surveys were taken on paper and transcribed on computer by staff at the Pleasant Street Center and the library, and it's possible that innocent errors in translation, excuse me, transcription were made, but otherwise, no editing, no change has been made. The outcome that I desire tonight is to understand voter opinions, and that's why this survey was developed. Our intention was to use these opinions to inform our actions relative to a potential ballot question. There are those who will want to cherry-pick the data they see here for their own purposes, good or bad, and I want no part of that. There are those who will suggest that some of the questions and responses here were designed to elicit negative responses, and I take exception to that suggestion. And there are those who will disregard what the survey reports and claim it's irrelevant, and I don't even know how to respond to that. The amount of time that's gone into this, its creation, its computation, now its outbrief, is substantial. The survey is designed to example, examines voter opinions from the three cohorts. Some of the opinions are happy, some are angry, and some are indifferent. It's possible some of what you read will be disagreeable or objectionable, and I'm not interested in using this survey to pick sides or pick losers or winners, and I suggest those listening to avoid the same behavior. What this Board wants, or I should say what I want, is understand how we get reading, and I mean all of reading, one reading, to yes. How do we get to yes? How do we move forward, and what will be different this year than our approach in two thousand and sixteen? Before I turn the floor over to Jane, I have one question for the Board, which we need to answer. What is the will of the Board regards distribution of tonight's questions and comments to the public? I have a thought, which I'll pass, and, which is that we ought to distribute tonight's survey as soon as practical. It's essentially public the minute it's presented. I would suggest we take a pause of a day, or two, or even a week on the comments for two reasons. One is that it's going to take a bit of time to prepare them, but more importantly, I want the survey results to sink in. I want folks to dwell on the quantitative before they swim in the quantitative and in the qualitative. And that, the value here is in both, but focus on the numbers before we get into the opinions. I'll turn it open for other comments. Barry?
Mr. Chair, I agree that the comments should be held back only because, you know, we did release some comments earlier on, on one of the other questions, and it seemed to create kind of a maelstrom of, of comments and, you know, people sort of falling within, you know, their, their swim lanes, you know, in, in their echo chambers, and since those comments were just sort of raw and not tied to any data, you know, I, what I'm afraid of is that people will go right to see if their comment was published, as opposed to actually, what does this survey tell us? So, my recommendation would be that we hold off on the comments, at least maybe through Thanksgiving, give the community a chance to digest what we have here, and then obviously it's public information, we let it go. But at least now people have a chance to kind of understand what the questions were, what the responses were, where some of the common ground is, where some of the things that we need to make up, before they go right to the comments. I mean, that's what people, people are going to do, and I think that what we're going to see here tonight is vastly more important and a bigger takeaway than, you know, just sort of the individual comments. I mean, we'll get those out, but, I mean, this is the more important thing, and so I, I would recommend maybe after Thanksgiving to let those out.
Any other opinions?
Just a point of clarification. First of all, that although you and myself and Barry have viewed this, it's important to point out we didn't view it together.
Correct.
Okay? So as to avoid any confusion about open meeting laws and quorums.
Nor did we talk about it amongst ourselves, either.
Nor did we see the comments. We never got to them.
I never saw them.
I, I think that Barry's suggestion probably has some good common sense to it. They are, as long as we're going to, everything has to be released, you know, it belongs in the public domain, but I do agree that the data analysis is probably the more valuable to us regarding a proposition two and a half override, how it's structured, how the message is delivered, and I, I think that there is a certain value to the comments, but they stand alone. And so the idea of giving till after Thanksgiving is something that I would be comfortable with as long as everybody in the audience and at home knows that it's not a question of withholding, it's a question of, you know, distribution in an orderly way.
Yeah, I understand those comments, so will not be discussed or released tonight? Or will?
No, the comments will not be released tonight. The proposal is to release them after Thanksgiving holiday.
I think that would be copacetic with the public records then, to release it later.
Okay? Andrew?
So, I think, no matter what we do-
Sorry, we only have one mic, so.
I think, I'll try to speak up or project. I think that no matter what we do, some people, you know, people are, are social beings, and we go to our comment and we post to Facebook, and some things are, some things may get blown out of proportion. I think that's going to happen no matter what we do, but if, if the, if the rest of the Board would like to have the, just the simple answers to the questions put out first, encourage people to digest that, and then put out the comments, that's, that's fine, afterwards, that's fine with me.
We don't need a vote, I just wanted to sample the will of the Board. Okay. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Jane. Jane?
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see you this evening. I'm Jane Miller. I'm going to take you through some of the things that, we're good, through some of the things that Mr. Arena just said, and we'll proceed. I have the presentation here on some slides. I also have the survey live on the website, and we can go to that later on. I do, it is easy to get really bogged down in some of these questions, so we're going to try and get through all of them first, and then we'll come back for your questions. It might go a little faster that way. So in June two thousand and seventeen, the Selectmen began working on drafting language for a survey to better understand residents' interests and concerns regarding Proposition Two and a Half, the override that failed in October two thousand and sixteen. The language was finalized and Town Hall staff administered the survey. The survey was offered online through Survey Monkey. Paper copies were distributed to the public at Town Hall, the Pleasant Street Center, and the Library. Surveys that were returned were manually entered into the online survey so as to capture responses within the data sets. I personally entered them, and I still have all of them, actually, in my office. The survey opened online on August first and closed at seven P.M. on September five. Two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight responses were collected through three modalities. One thousand seven hundred and eighty were collected through a website link, which was the most shared link. Six hundred and twenty-seven were through social media link posted on Facebook and Twitter, and eighty-one manually entered surveys, as I mentioned. Previously, we had comments from question thirteen released, as was mentioned, but those comments represented less than half of the total comments, which were two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven, which you can kind of see up here. We had questions, we had comments from seven questions. Question two had seventy-nine comments, question three had three hundred and thirteen, and so forth. They'll be released later, and they'll be binned by how people voted, so you can see how yes voters comment and how no voters comment, and so on. While this is not a statistically significant survey, we did limit responses on IP addresses. With two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight responses, this is equivalent to thirteen percent of registered voters, using the figure from two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting. Importantly, in the October two thousand and sixteen override election, six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two ballots were cast, representing thirty-seven percent of registered voters at the time. As such, we cannot assume global results on the clear basis of responses, as the response is not representative of all the voters. However, we can look within each response group, each cohort, as Mr. Arena mentioned, for trends that inform why voters made the choices that they did. So, these are, just a little bit of fun stuff here. The average time to complete the survey was four minutes and fifty-two seconds. Eighty-four percent full completion rate on all surveys, meaning every single question was answered. There were fourteen questions total, one was the last one, if folks wanted to give us their name or address. And then this is the breakdown of the votes. So here's question one. How did you vote? Forty-one percent of the respondents said they voted yes in the election, thirty-nine percent voted no. I know it's hard to see here. And then twenty percent reported they did not vote. So we had five hundred and three people who participated in this survey that did not vote in the election. The takeaway, what's important to remember is these numbers do not reflect the same ratio of the October two thousand and sixteen election. No voters are vastly underrepresented in this turnout. As a recap, there were four thousand ninety-seven residents who voted no on the override ballot, and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-five that voted yes. It may be said that the equivalent of thirty-six percent of yes voters participated in the survey, and twenty-four percent of no voters participated. These are just fun little things I forgot I put in. Question two. So this was for yes voters. If you remember, if you took the survey online, if you answered yes, it put you into this question automatically. So, what were the drivers of yes votes? And the next page is a chart, it's hard to read, so we're just going to stay right here. The two biggest drivers that stand out are historical and future cuts to schools. The school-related issues were the primary drivers for yes voters. There's plenty of seats in the front if you want to see a little bit better. And, let's see here. Keeping up service levels to protect property values was third, closely followed by presentations by town and school officials convinced folks that they needed to vote yes, or they wanted to vote yes. So those are the primary drivers, but schools, historical and future cuts stand head and shoulders above the rest. And these are the percentages. Let's see here, seventy percent historical, eighty-one percent future cuts. Question three, if you voted no, we said, please tell us three reasons why. These were close, much closer together. Sixty-one percent said the override request was too big, just too large. Fifty, fifty-two percent, so over here, in the green, said the town or the municipal side budget did not justify the need for an override and explain where funds would be used, closely followed by the same thing for the school department. Forty-three percent said schools didn't make the case. These voters did not trust the messages they heard about how an override would be spent. We'll dig in more on this topic later, but this is where we start to see the beginning of the trust gap, something I call the trust gap. It's important to note, of three hundred and thirteen open response comments on this question, which had a pretty high percentage of respondents sharing their thoughts, common themes included excessive spending, taxation, the library debt exclusion, and an expectation that the town, including the schools, needs to stay within a budget. I can just take a moment and go back briefly to question two, I apologize. I just wanted to review some of the comments here in broad strokes. Reviewing the seventy-nine open response comments, about ten wrote that they actually voted no in the election, indicating that a few did not understand the question, choosing yes because they voted in the election, not because it's how they voted. The impact on the results is de minimis, but I'm sure people will notice later when they read the comments. Additionally, many of the comments are actually not really supportive of the override in spite of their yes vote. Again, tenors of mis- Again, tenors of mistrust, begrudgingly voting yes, yes, mixed messaging, and more. And again, here, we start to see that trust gap. So, moving back, we've already covered question three. Question four. If you did not vote, please select all that apply. The takeaway here, getting to the polls and an information gap, but the comments also reveal clues. 43% of the respondents state that they intended to vote, but couldn't get to the polls. Later on, we'll see that getting a ride to the polls isn't going to change how anybody votes, so that's interesting. 30% or 88 of the respondents say they didn't feel informed enough about the issues, and 27% said they didn't realize the election was even happening. However, looking at the comments, we received 101 on this question, 40% actually stated that they did in fact vote, so this selection was an erroneous choice for those individuals. Of more interest, others stated they didn't live in Reading at the time, but they wanted to weigh in on an override issue, as offered in the survey. Ultimately, it was very smart to include a comment section here, as the answers offered weren't necessarily the ones that best fit the respondents in this case. Question five, this is when we start to get a little bit more interesting. What would it take to get to yes? The factors that matter. As you can see on the chart, we've bin them. I don't know if you, this is the people that voted yes in this section here, these are the folks that voted no, and these are the folks that did not vote, and this is how we break it down. So, respondents here, the takeaway, let's move to the chart. Folks are really looking for clarity, communication, and the amount. That's what's resonating across all of the groups. Respondents are telling the town that where the funds are going is critical in gaining any support for a future override, and that they would only support this, it only supported if the selectmen and the school committee convinced residents that they have cut their funds or their budgets appropriately. So, 58%, which is here, said they would vote yes if there was more clarity. This is the second place vote for both the yes and the no respondents. It was top for folks who didn't vote, but it got the most results, with 992. 43% said they would vote yes if the selectmen and the school committee convinced them they've cut costs as much as possible. This was the top answer for no voters, and the third answer for yes voters. 41%, and this is really interesting, I think, 41% stated they would vote yes if they knew such a request was being made, just to know that there was an override, they'd vote yes. However, and I think this is really key, only 2% of no voters, almost 3% of no voters, agree with that sentiment. So, instead, a smaller override request is the third place answer for no voters, and may be a way to gain some support for a future override, excuse me, if other conditions are met, as we're looking for consensus. Question six, oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting I have all these comments about the comments. Bear with me. Of the 493 comments on this question, many flat-out state they would not support an override for any reason or for any amount, period. Most of the rest of the comments are also negative, and display concerns with honesty and trust of the school committee, the superintendent, the town manager, and the selectmen. Many were divided particularly along those lines. There is a perception of a rift between town departments, such as the DPW, police, fire, and public services, and the school department, despite the healthy and positive working relationships among town employees, many who are in the audience tonight. Reiterating the narrative that this is one Reading and one town, and that all departments matter in order to deliver services necessary to the public, will be an important part of messaging in the future. Question six, where do you get your information? Where do we find out more information about what's going on in our local activities? This one, I thought was fascinating, as a former recovering newspaper editor. Across the board, and I think this is fascinating, and I'll go back to this, because we have a little thing here, but across the board, conversations with neighbors was the number one answer for every single group, and that is this, where's my mouse? Here we go. It's this bar right here, the last one, this brown, this tan, it's the number one answer. We told everybody they could check all that apply, and conversations with neighbors was resonated across every single group. So, what else do we know? Let's see, I'm not even going by my notes. The yes voters, looking at the yes voters, their second source of information was social media, and their third were online news blogs, so like the Reading Patch. For no voters, their number one was conversations with neighbors, their second was news blogs, their third was print media, such as the Chronicle, and the fourth, which was a really close fourth, was the town website. They're very close. Over here, for did not vote, similar to the yes voters, again, conversations with neighbors, then your news blogs, and then social media is third for these folks. What this tells us is that, is that most people, quite naturally, are engaging in confirmation bias. Talking to friends and neighbors is a predominant source of news, because they are already largely in agreement. Generally speaking, parents of school-aged children talk to other parents of school-aged children on soccer fields, at school pickup, at the park, wherever it is. Senior citizens on fixed incomes tend to talk to other seniors at senior centers, cafes, the grocery store, wherever they encounter their neighbors, and their friends. Social media, the second choice among yes voters, excuse me, yes voters, and third for those that did not vote, is in no small part, an extension of conversations with neighbors. In fact, with this model, some may never hear or read an opposing viewpoint. It also shows what an important role the media plays in the dissemination of facts across multiple channels, print, social, digital, and cable. Perhaps the most important is the effort that will be required by, required by selectmen, school committee members, and others to reach out to individuals with differing opinions, meet them where they are, and listen to their concerns. This survey was a strong step in that direction. And this is just the chart that shows the data. Question seven, tax bills, how does Reading measure up to our peer communities? So, this one's, this one's a little funky. Right here, the orange, is that people feel their tax bills are about the same. These are higher, green and blue are higher, and light blue and rust are lower. And then, you have this purple right on the end, means I have no idea. So, what's interesting here is that this question really is all about perception. On average, yes voters perceive Reading taxes to be lower than no voters and did not vote. Your yes voters at the top, they tend to be bulking up here, your no voters, a little bit higher, and same with your did not vote. Okay? That said, a fair number of respondents, 348, had no idea how Reading compares. In general, few respondents believe the town has lower-than-peer averages. For the record, now that the library construction debt is included in tax bills, Reading is on par with peer communities. If we look strictly, so this is kind of a fun thing to do. If we go to the survey, and we look strictly at respondents who, this is going to take a second while it munges, respondents who felt they had a high tax bill, okay, so folks that are, actually, let's just look at this. We're going to look at this rule right here, and we're only looking at people who thought the tax bill was $1,000 or higher than peer averages. Okay? So, if we look down at question eight, which we'll get to in a moment. I want you to remember these numbers. 63% would vote no for any reason, or any amount, and 44, 41% would vote yes for any amount. So, just keep that in mind as we move on to the next question, because it changes. Basically, what we're seeing is, if you believe your taxes are high, that affects exactly how you will vote on the override, and it shows up here in the data. So, back to question seven. To question eight, if you live in the average $500,000 Reading home, you would vote yes on the April override if. So, again, we're binned here by yes, no votes, and did not vote, and what's interesting is the distribution is almost exactly the opposite. The takeaway, the data shows there's actually movement here for both yes and no voters. More than half of yes voters wouldn't support as high an override as last year. That's these folks right here. Okay? Slightly less than half of no voters would consider supporting an override. That's these folks right here. This is 750 or less, this is $500 or less, this is $250 or less, and this is, I would not vote yes for any amount, and just to point out, these are yes voters. These people say they won't vote yes again. Over here, it's almost the exact opposite. So, this is getting to yes the money factor. Remembering that the no votes are significantly underrepresented in this survey, it remains interesting to note that only slightly less than half indicate they might support an Unsurprisingly, the converse, more than half said that they would not vote yes for any amount. These are the entrenched no voters. Nearly half of the yes voters that participated in this survey said they would support an override even if the amount were greater than $1,000 annually. These are your entrenched yes voters. The remaining folks in the middle, looking at override amounts from 250 and under to 750, this is the zone of folks willing to change their minds, and leaders will want to spend time talking to them. And just to look back at the chart, again, these are the folks. You don't want to lose these if you want to pass an override, and you want to try and gain some of these, and finding that that amount sweet spot is part of the solution, certainly not the only thing that we're seeing here in the survey. Our did not voters are a little bit more evenly distributed here. Question nine is, what's your use of Reading Public Schools? Respondents across the board overwhelmingly are either current parents of Reading Public School students, or parents of former students. These, the respondents to this survey are very familiar with our schools. Here are yes voters. Let's see here, that's really hard to read, huh? Currently attending, we have 1,088 students. These are among all respondents, that have children currently in Reading Public Schools. A second runner-up was 493, for those who had children recently attend, or attend but not currently. Together, they far exceed the other three responses. For no voters, responses were nearly symmetrical for having current and former, and I'll show you that on the chart. This is the current, and these are the former students, so it's nearly symmetrical for no voters, whereas yes voters predominantly way above have students currently in public schools, and so did the did not vote cohort. We therefore understand, however, that no voters that participated understand the school system and the role education plays in the community. That said, having children that currently attend RPS was higher across all, 67% for yes voters, 47% that did not vote, and 38% of no voters. When 38% of no voters have children enrolled in Reading Public Schools, we can see that trust gap begin to emerge. I think sometimes there's a perception that no voters didn't have kids in school, and that's absolutely not the case. The next question we ask is, how, what's your relationship? How do you use municipal side services? And we allow, we ask people to check everything. This is a great, this is a great question. What we see here is tremendous congruity among the responses. For the library, the recreation department, and the Department of Public Works, the top three answers for everyone. The only difference is, for no voters, the recreation department was slightly less than the Department of Public Works, but for everybody else, recreation was actually a little bit higher. Overwhelming response was the library. Everybody uses the library. This question received 152 comments, 52 from yes voters, 85 from no voters, and 15 from those that did not vote. Despite derision in the comments throughout the entire survey against the library project and resulting debt, it is strongly the most-used department in the community, based on these responses, receiving 1,818 votes on this question. While we can talk about the divisibility of certain public goods and services, generally, everyone benefits from most of these services, one way or another. The extent to which they acknowledge or understand it is, tells us something interesting about the mindset of the voter. Comments from the yes and the did not vote respondents were generally matter-of-fact. I use this department, I use that department, I, you know, this, that, it's very straightforward. The no voters were, however, far more likely to offer a comment, carried a more negative tone in their comments, pointing once again to that trust gap. Library, recreation, and public works. So, let's talk a little bit about some demographic data. Question 11 asks about the age of our respondents. The takeaway here is, while no voters are all ages, they tend to be older than yes voters and did not vote respondents, but not much older. And we see that here in our, we see that here in our statistics. So, you look, and it may be hard for you to tell, this is category one, two, three, four, and so on. And the way we look at, what is the minimum respondent? Every category had a two. So, nobody below 18 filled out this survey. But somebody in this, in this category, 18 to 25, filled it out in each, in each bracket, and the maximum was eight. So, there's somebody in every age category on here, except for under 18. The median vote, the median for yes voters and did not vote was four, so you're in here in the 30 to 45 category, where's my mouse? Right there, and your did not vote, the median was five. But then, we look at the mean, so it's 4.6 and 4.56 for your did not vote, and here it's 5.4, but with a standard deviation of 1.31. So, for all of you statistics nerds out there like me, and boy, I'm rusty, let me tell you, what we see here is that there was greater age diversity among the no voters. The spread was, was larger in no voters. You were more clustered in age, and a little bit younger than your yes voters and your did not vote. For statistical purposes, how long have you lived in Reading? So, this isn't terribly surprising, considering the age issue we just mentioned. The takeaway, no voters tend to be residents of Reading longer than yes and did not vote respondents. Yes voters were clustered in the 10 to 20 age group, which is this light blue, and then the three to six-year group right here. Okay? Your no voters, no voters had 35% in the 30-plus year, which is this purple on the end, 26% in the 10 to 20 years, and 23% in 20 to 30 years. So, they're really clustered right here. Your did not voters, it's 30% of the respondents in 10 to 20, but then relatively evenly distributed among the rest of the classes. And what you see here is that there is less diversity, or less of a spread, on your standard deviation for your no voters, so they're clustered in the higher, the higher levels, and you can see that here. Question 13 was the comments. This is how many comments were received, and if, they were released previously, and there were 1,022 of them, 440 were yes respondents, 457 were no respondents, and 125 were, did, had not voted. The takeaway here is that nearly half of all the survey respondents left a general comment. While it represents less than half of all the comments received throughout the survey, the trust gap is evident through these comments, I've read all of them. But they also include accolades for elected and appointed officials all across the various town departments and boards, as well as constructive criticism across the board in all classes. And I think there's a lot of really good information in the comments. There's also some unvarnished comments in the comments, so, you know, you got to read it, you got to read it that way. So, in, some conclusions. Local leaders have an opportunity to address this trust gap through improved communication across and among the boards and residents of all ages. Getting out into the community and listening to what voters have to say matters not just in garnering support for an override, but also for formulating the decision to go forward. Voters want clarity about how override funds will be spent. Here is evidence of that trust gap. Over and over, residents reiterate throughout this survey that they need more clarity about how override funds would be distributed, what they will get for their tax dollars. This is easier to see in debt exclusions such as the library project. Work here must include programs, concise answers, manpower, whatever it is, the desire for clarity cuts across all demographics. Voters need to be convinced that town boards have trimmed their budgets. This is a communication and perception issue. It's the trust. It's the trust gap again. Just as residents need clarity as to where new funds will be spent, they want to know that their current contributions are not wasted. Continuing to work on transparency, as the boards already do, clear communication on current and legacy budgets will help build trust around this gap. Based on the data, residents may support an override somewhere around $500 per annum. Considering that about half of no voters that participated said they might support an override, there is a possibility that should the trust gap be bridged and the override request lower on a per annum basis than the October 2016 request, an override of somewhere around $500 may find support. As a reference point, the October 2016 request was closer to $900 to $1,000 per annum, depending on your mid-level valuation. Finally, about half of all respondents indicated they might change their vote in either direction. This applies to both yes and no voters, requiring once again the bridging of that trust gap with transparency and open communication. With a strong 37% voter turnout in October 2016 and a 60-40 rejection of the override, any success will require not only increasing voter turnout, but also changing no votes to yes and retaining your yes votes. The opportunities for leaders to reach out to voters, especially those outside their typical peer groups, abound over the next few months of the budget process. Concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Jane. I just, just kudos. Thank you, Jane. That was outstanding. I'll open the floor to elected bodies who wish to ask a clarifying question to any of the questions. Anyone on the board? Andrew?
Yeah, a question and a, and a comment. You said a number of times that the no voters were underrepresented, but I think as you presented the data, that's, that's not really an accurate statement. You were, you were sampling from three different populations, and you, you got a pretty good sample from, from each of those three different populations. And so when they were divided up, 20%, 40%, 30%, getting more, for example, no voters to answer the questionnaires might have given you a some more accurate distribution among the no voters. But from a statistical standpoint, they weren't really underrepresented because you weren't adding all three groups together. You were looking at them as standalone groups.
Yeah, we looked at them as standalone groups intentionally because the disparity was underrepresented relative to the October 2016 vote. So it's, that's the underrepresentation that I'm referencing. But there, I think there is enough information there that you can look at the cohort and get an understanding of where that group is thinking.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, whenever you, whenever you go out and sample a population, if you get 40% of that population, you're going to get a decent idea of where that population, what characteristics describe that population. If you get 60% return, you get a little more accurate feel for what characteristics describe that population. So I think you did a great job here in separating the three out because it somewhat mitigated that disparity between yes and no.
Yeah, okay.
And, and the question that I had was, given that some of the comments indicated that people might have identified themselves in the wrong group, is it, is it possible to, based on their answer to, or their comments to a question, could you regroup that voter? And would it really make any difference?
So in most, sorry, that was loud. In most cases, it's de minimis. So it wouldn't change the, you know, the bottom line effect of what's happening in that group. But it's important to note, because when we release the comments, people will note that, and they'll see, well, this person voted no, this person voted yes, and I wanted to be clear that we looked at that, and we, we decided that was de minimis. So, but it's important to note because we are interested in transparency.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, Jane, this was tremendous. You really did a great job in sort of parsing it out and really breaking it down and showing us really the, really where the hearts and minds are, I think, of, of the Reading voters. And I also want to compliment the Reading voters who took four and a half minutes out of their life to really tell us what they think. That's, you know, if we could just make sure that every time it was only going to take four and a half minutes, I think we'd get a lot more participation in government. But I think there's a lot of good news here. First of all, the lion's share of people's minds are not made up, right? You have people who voted yes, who are going to vote yes no matter what, and you have people who voted no, no matter what you say and do, are still going to vote no. From my calculation, it looks like that's about 70 or 75% of the people in the middle who, who can be convinced. That's number one. Number two, the survey brought out really what I think we all intuitively understood. It was too big. We didn't really make the case about where it was going to go. We might not have made the case of what would happen if, and we didn't make the case of where we, of, of the cuts that we've already made. So that's an opportunity for all of us to kind of go back and really just, and make that case stronger. But the, the takeaway, one of the bigger takeaways for me, I think, was on question six. I think it was six. Where do you get your information from?
Oh, I love that question.
So I love that question, too.
I'm going to go up here.
And I, I don't think the Chronicle likes it all that much, but you know.
I used to be a print newspaper editor.
I, I get the Chronicle. So I think your comment was about kind of that the way people are getting their information is that they're getting information from their own echo chambers, right? They're, they're talking to people who agree with them. And that's a job, I think, that as the leadership of the town, we need to really get in there and try to change. And the thing to me was the, if you look at, I can't tell.
So this is, this is that question. I'm sorry to interrupt. This is question six. This is on the live survey, and I'm just zooming in here so you can see a little bit more. This is exactly what you're talking about right now.
But for the, but the smallest number appears to be.
Attending a community listening session.
Listening session, but also conversations with town and school employees or elected officials. That's like one of the lowest ones across all boards.
It's hot pink.
Right. So what it means is, is that, you know, we're not out there talking to the voters. I, I know we didn't do it last time as, as much as we could have. We have five months now to go out there and change that perception. So really, I mean, as selectmen, school committee people, library trustees, FinCom folks, that's the town leadership. Those are the folks that need to get out there and talk to people that you don't know. And so I think that's kind of, you know, that, that's, that's a big to-do list now for me, which is talk about this to everybody who'll listen and those who won't. And, and that's the role of the leadership, I think, because we need to get that, forgive me, is it pink, is it magenta, is it purple?
It's a, it's a pink.
It's a.
It's a bright pink, yeah.
All that red.
Maybe, yeah, it looks red. We need to get that bar up.
Yes.
If we're going to, if we're going to move the needle, in my opinion. So that's my takeaways.
Raising the bar. Okay?
I'd take issue a little bit barrier with what you said. Thinking back to last year, I think we were comfortable that we had described it well enough. In retrospect, maybe not, but at the time, thought we had described the need well enough. This clearly says not so, not so fast. I think there was, remember the dialogue last year, the, the initial discussion started at a $9 million override. We settle on seven and a half. Boy, were we off. And that's really the takeaway is, I think you've really got to test that number much harder than we did. And I think your third point is right on the money, which is, we talked about having a, a plan if it passed and a plan if it failed. And I think you desperately, you genuinely need a plan if it failed to let the community know what the consequence is if you take the left fork versus the right fork. And I'm not sure we did enough in that vein either.
Well, this year we will because we have a budget, and then we have a budget if an override passes. And that's a clear.
It's much clearer.
And, you know, people can be able to see, okay, we get this and not that. That's just by the way, the timing and the structure compared to last time.
Dan, comments?
Still digesting it.
John?
Well, I, you know, I don't, there's no point in, in being redundant. You guys have pointed out what's, what's evident. So, you know, I mean, it's amount, it's how you spend it, and are you going to do what you say you're going to do? Because there was a trust issue that is not exactly quantifiable up there, but if you read between the lines, it's pronounced. And you've got to establish or re-establish that trust level based on the information that you deliver, and that information has to be concise. People have an interest in, this is what I'm seeing here anyway. They have an interest in the value proposition, and I think that's not surprising. Somebody came to this town and bought a, bought a home in the last five years particularly, maybe 10, they felt like they were getting a value, and they were willing to pay up for that value. And now they're saying the same thing. I'll pay up, but give me what I, you know, give me a value and tell me how you're going to spend my money. That to me, I'm, that's what I'm seeing in, in these numbers.
Yeah?
Yeah, there is actually an omission that we probably should have caught on this survey. There are two very vital services that everyone in this town uses that were not listed in that group, and that's police and fire and emergency response.
No.
John?
It's included in public safety.
Public safety.
Public safety.
Oh, it was? Okay.
I can take you to it. Well, it's in micro dots, so I'm not surprised you can't see it.
Where was it?
It's a.
Everybody was, you said they were using that.
Yeah, so here, I will, I will scroll in for you.
It was the highest bar in, across the board.
No, public safety is orange. This color here is public safety. So this is your library, okay? This, this is human and elder services. This is the library. Public safety. Public works, which includes paving, tree service, water, et cetera. Recreation. Veteran services down here. That's not a surprising response. It's a very specific department. The town clerk's office, and other, and that was please specify, and we received, oh, this is question 10, 152 comments from other.
Yeah, we're going to have to articulate very strongly their needs in the, in the public safety area. We, we talked about this on a program we recorded together today.
To, to follow up on that, if I might, it's interesting. Everybody notes public safety. It's not their top one. It's not their bottom one. And I think one of the reasons that everybody realizes that they use it, but it's not a, it's, it's not high, is it's good. You know? I mean, when you know you dial 911 and either a police officer or an EMT or a firefighter shows up, and you can count on that, you tend to take it for granted. And, you know, fortunately, in this town, public safety is, I think, delivered in exemplary way. Obviously, one of, we've talked about this before, a very large concern is how long they can hold that together, frankly. When you really dig, when you look under the surface of staffing and expanded needs as a result of both economic development and housing development, it's just a big question as to how long that's going to hold itself together.
We have had literally a level funding of public safety for the last 50 years in terms of positions. Not, not in terms of money, but number of.
Staffing.
Staffing.
Feet on the street.
And, and in the meantime, Reading has grown in population, some 20%. The composition of Reading is changing. There are far more multifamily dwellings, clusters of 55-plus dwellings. All those generate emergency calls, some generate police calls in, in certain configurations. And that, that is starting to catch up with us and straining our ability to handle more than a single incident, either be it a fire or a police call in this town. I don't think we've articulated that. We really end up, and that, that police study that we were presented with on the 10th of October was very eye-opening.
Was very eye-opening. You know, we resorted the information of our peer communities and isolated those five communities that touch our borders.
Yes.
Were last. Were last in the amount of firefighters and, or not firefighters, but police officers per thousand. Pretty interesting, actually. I mean, a little frightening, to be honest with you.
And what's scary is some of the communities we would rely on for mutual aid are as strained as we are, so we have to.
And that's really true on the, on the fireside.
Let's, let's open it up to the other elected committees. We'll go to school committee first. I can't tell everyone who's out here.
Elaine's had her hand up the longest, I think.
I don't think there's a mic, so just.
Pardon me?
I have a question. Were any, were any surveys discarded?
Not in this result, no. All of the, all of the handheld, all the handwritten ones that were turned in, they, we took, we closed the survey on a certain date, and then they came, some of them came over by inter-office mail, and I have every one of them.
I just want to understand if any were.
We can sort the data actually by people who didn't finish the survey, and we can, we can parse that out, but again, it's relatively de minimis, doesn't really change the results.
So there were 200, 2,400 respondents, and you said the mission was that the survey would pass, that's about 17%, maybe 17% of the eligible voters who vote in the town.
Okay. Roughly fair, yeah, I'm not, without doing the math.
So a question on, I'm concerned about drawing certain, from the data. I think we have to be careful about looking at this, looking at data from a very specific set of respondents to the survey. So.
We can only draw the movements based on the respondents in the survey.
So I, I'm a little concerned about, one of the conclusions is that we are basing this data, and we're saying that we're going to project that as to the behavior of the residents. But I think when we look at data, this data, we can say that the respondents to the survey would support an override somewhere above $500 per, per annum, and that was a bigger range than that data.
It was.
I'm just a little concerned because the overall response rate of the survey at 17% stated it's not statistically significant, but how are we drawing a, an inference to how residents will behave, how, how the 17,000 voting residents will behave? I think we have to just be careful about that.
I really do.
That this is, that the conclusion is really based on the data, the respondents of the survey would support something in the neighborhood of.
So, yeah, so your, your issue is with the word residents versus respondents.
And I think you picked a, put a number there when really the data shows a range. And I'm, I'm concerned about that because we, we have to be careful about how we start putting numbers out there and without any, any basis in where we need to go and the budget, we need to do the budget process, all of our need to go through the budget process, we need to go through what, if we are going to ask for an override, what that override number be, and we are sort of supposing a number here and saying that that's what we think residents would support, and I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with making that connection, yeah.
I think that's fair. I think that it could say, it could better say instead of residents respondents. And yes, there is a range, and the range is lower than 500. It's not higher typically when you look at the no voters. So, and they're the ones you really need to convince. So yes, you do, the boards need to go through their budget process, absolutely, and I used to be a school committee member, and I understand that very well. But you also have a tolerance level in your, in your, in your population or based on the respondents to your data, your survey.
Depending on which voters, and I hear you, the 250 to 750 range that we saw on the respondents to the survey, you voted no. So you have, you have a group there that, that has a certain tolerance, but then you have the yes voters who responded to the survey, and that tells you something about what that, their tolerance is. And we need to reach out and speak to both and all of the people in, in our community, no matter which of the three categories they may be in.
Hundred percent.
So.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call on Linda.
I think she was the next one.
Linda, can you speak into a microphone so we can hear you?
There's, there's no microphone.
I can project very well.
Those are for RCTV, so, but I'll repeat the question.
Okay.
Thank you very much for this analysis. I thought it was really helpful. One of my reactions is that we have to be very careful not to jump to simple conclusions, and I'll use one example, is that we weren't the main authorities that people refer to for their information, and one conclusion we could draw is that we weren't out there. But another conclusion might be that the way we were out there wasn't a way that other people were comfortable with. And so one thing that I heard loud and clear was that people are more comfortable in smaller groups, and a lot of, some of what we do is in bigger groups and on TV, and it's. it's harder to speak, if you could hear my heart, you know how hard it is to speak when the cameras are rolling and all these people are here. But when you're in smaller groups, that might be one sort of alternative response to the, the data that we got, that maybe people would feel more comfortable in a home with a smaller group of people, with someone that they could ask their questions to and not be judged for their questions. So just sort of a creative parsing of the responses that we got. And the other question that I had was, I, I feel deeply the trust gap that you've mentioned, and, and that you pulled from the data, and I'm wondering if you found correlations between that trust gap and where people are getting their information, and you might have said that, but I'm wondering if there's a correlation, and here's my bias, from, to, there's a lot of different sources online, social media, where the information comes from people other than those who are, well, it comes from lots of different sources, and a lot of people have a lot of opinions on social media, and I'm wondering about correlations with those origins of information.
So, I think that's, um-
I don't think it's directed.
Did everybody hear her question? Did everybody hear that? That she's interested in correlations between where people get their information and the trust gap? And I'm happy to go back and kind of dig a little bit more to look at that, because I can play with the filters a little bit, we have some filters, if you look at the screen, I'll show you. And I don't want to do it right now, because I'd want to make sure I get it right, before I present it publicly. But we can filter on any question. And so how do we quantify the trust gap, which I think Mr. Halsey very accurately stated, isn't discreet in the data, it's more felt between the lines, and I think it resonates for most of the people in the room, and we understand that, so I can take it back and present it in a couple of different ways to you, and we'll present that in the final document, if that's acceptable.
Thank you.
Because I think it's a really good point, yeah. Yeah, my pleasure.
Yes.
I think it's sort of dangerous, I'm particularly worried about the question about the word, people voted on a dollar number per year with no context to it. Because I think what we saw in question five was, a lot more people said, "I would be willing to vote for an override if you convince me," when there's no dollar number tied to it. Then we take it, just sort of give me a random dollar number, people are always going to choose a lower number. It's like, "How much do you feel like paying?" "I feel like paying two fifty." And I think what really is, we have to take those two together, along with the misinformation on where our taxes actually are, and we really have to get out there and tell people the real story. Because I have a feeling that five hundred dollar number would change, if you said, "Okay, for five hundred, we only cut four cops, and four firemen. For seven fifty, you get to keep two firemen. For a thousand, you get to keep them all." That might change the answer, that number, out of the blue, I almost completely disagree, I mean, it's, it's nice to know sort of what numbers people are kind of thinking of, but this is really just saying, "We need to make the case and let people know. By the way, your taxes are not high. By the way, for five hundred bucks, we, we cut these things." And that will change that five hundred dollar number, so to, to just look at, say, if people want to pay only about five hundred, that only applies with no context.
All right, we're going to move on, and I'll tell it's on.
Feeling it's, oh, it's on now. So I'm going to, we're going to do the Moe Griffin Show here, and we'll bring the mic, we'll bring the microphone around, and I'll just answer your question right there. So, are, are you next? I don't think this cord, it goes that long, oh, it so does. All right, I hope there's no knots, that's on you, okay.
I lost it an hour ago.
All right, I'll take it out of your hands if you take too long, I'm just kidding.
Just try. Couple of comments and question, or maybe a question first, then a comment. First, a question, and, and for you, Jane, I'm wondering if you can put question eleven back for a second. I just wanted to see a little bit more on kind of the ages, and it'd be great to compare that with services used at some point. I think that might be pretty telling. But I somehow, I, I kind of went flying.
Question eleven, okay.
Okay, so, just looking at kind of average ages, in the yes voters, so kind of thirty-six, thirty-six to forty, to fifty-five?
Right here.
These are two big clusters.
Yep, that's your thirty-six to fifty-five, it's blue.
And the no voters goes out a little bit deeper, so it goes out, you still have strengthened the early numbers, but then it goes out to a little bit higher.
Right.
Okay. Correlating that with services used at some point, in other words, taking a look at age and services together, not now, but just as a-
Well, actually, I can probably do that for you right now. Which ages do you want to look at?
So those-
So that's question eleven.
Yeah, I'd say the, the edges, not the center, but the edges, in other words, a little bit younger, a little bit older.
So you want to do your thirty-six to forty-five?
Yep, and then the, and fifty-six, actually, or maybe even, yeah, and then, and sixty-six to seventy-five as well.
So you want to look at just these, and then what do you want to look at?
Ages and services used.
Okay.
To the next, question ten.
Question ten, oh wait. Bear with me. All right, so these are the respondents in those categories. So again, library is still super hot. Recreation is in the same place, and then DPW, so it doesn't really change the distribution based on age. You do see in your no voters a slight uptick in your health and, you know, human and elder services department.
Yep, if it's possible, and not here, I think we need to separate those groups. I think there's a younger group, and then there's a slightly older group. I think putting them together kind of mishmashed it, to see them separately.
Oh, yeah, I can do that, hold on. So which group do you want to look at first?
Why don't we take the fifty, fifty-six plus?
Fifty-six plus, okay. So it's showing, it's showing you the results for voters in the yes, no, and the did-not-vote category, in those age groups only that you selected.
Right, on question ten.
Just to repeat what we're doing here. Sorry. Okay? So in your older age group, you see across the board, recreation drops off as the second most populous category, and you see an increase in the town clerk's office, which was the fourth respondent generally. That goes up a lot, a lot, this is a specific number for you. But second, for your do-not voters, it's your, it's pretty much tied, that's ninety-nine and a hundred. So it's different by one for the no voters, and, uh, let's see, eighty-three and eighty-five, so it's about equivalent with DPW.
And the library stays very strong.
And the library stays very strong.
Great, okay, thank you. And then the, um, the comment that I wanted to make, one of the things that I thought was very pointed, it was your comment, Jane, this, kind of the one Reading comment, and the notion that, correctly or incorrectly, there's a perception that the different departments of the town, the different activities, the towns and schools, all those groups need to be very much together in pushing this ahead, if it's going to have any chance of, of success. And I think that's something that the folks in this room really have a big potential impact on, is how to do that, and how to make it clear that if this is what we want, then we all have to be singing kind of the same song.
Well, your town rises and falls together.
Exactly, thank you.
Eric?
Actually, I was going to comment on that, it actually dovetails, Mark, into, into your question. So, Jane, I forget the question that it was, but I think it might have been the question about how long you've been in town, your tenure in town?
Yep, how long you've lived in Reading.
And it looked like that those folks who have been here longer skewed no.
Yes.
Those people who have been here for a shorter period of time skewed yes.
Correct.
And it, and, and so what that says to me is kind of along the lines of, of, of one Reading, is that an interpretation could be, "Well, I've lived here, my kids have gone through the school, I've done my bit, you know, I can't afford to pay anymore," and some people, it's probably related to age, and some folks, you know, don't have the income, and they're the folks who came here and said, "We moved to this town, paid over asking for our house, having two earners, you know, being able to work, work the mortgage. I came here for the great schools that you folks had thirty years ago, now it's our turn." So it almost seems like potentially, it's kind of a, I don't want to say a culture war, a war between the states, but, but that there are people who have expectations of the level of services and their desire to pay for them, based on how long they've been here. But in reality, this town is Reading because of the folks who've lived here for a long time and made it what it was, and this town is going to continue to be Reading for the young energy and the young people coming in to build up this town, so therefore, we have to look at it holistically and say, "What do we need to run the town for the services for the benefit of all?" Now, on the selectmen, we've done a little, a little bit of it, right? We were the third town in the Commonwealth, to basically try to help out lower-income seniors on, on the tax bill, right? Does it go far enough? Probably not. But it was an attempt to say, "We're going to take care of the most vulnerable, the people who've been here the longest, the people who have the hardest ability to pay." But yet, we also have to look at the people who came here for the same reasons folks did thirty or forty years ago. And how do we help them get to the point where their kids can graduate school, get great jobs, so that they can pay the senior tax relief for when it's our turn? So, you know, I, I think that that's kind of the, the messaging, it's not about like, who's going to get what, what piece of the pie? It's how do we fund the town to the benefit of everybody who lives here, and who wants to move here? Right? Because again, that's our property values, the people who support our property values, obviously, the, the hard work that we do here, but it's also, also the people who want to move to Reading. And they want to move to Reading because we have great schools, we have great recreation, we have public safety far, you know, unsurpassed. So I think that's part of the messaging, that it's not just trying to get people who are, you know, knocking heads, "Oh, you know, you're a young whippersnapper," or "You're an, you know, old crony," right? How do those people get together and realize that their best interests lie in a town that's well-funded? So, that, that's a, a piece that I think there's an opportunity for all of us.
Well, and, and if I can add, as you were speaking, this occurred to me, and, and the comments from some of the school committee members. Folks that have been in town thirty or more years, and their kids haven't been in school in maybe twenty years. The education landscape has really changed, I mean, it's just gone through such a tremendous change. And trying to communicate how those changes are, in many cases federally mandated and, and state mandated, it's a very different world educationally than it was, and so that's part of the communication that we need to, and then the social contract that sort of exists for creating an environment that folks had thirty years ago for their kids, and then to continue on, just the way that you said.
Any other comments?
Sorry, Peter. Eric Burkhart, Reading resident on FinCom, thank you very much for putting this together, I think it's terrific. Then again, I'm a data geek, so I love this kind of stuff. I just heard my wife groan in agreement somewhere, and she's at home. So a couple of things, I, I think the, we might need to be a little careful about saying it's, and if I heard this correctly, it's not statistically significant. I'm, I'm not even quite sure what that means, I think statistical significance, that gets into like, you know, causation, variables related and all that. If, if we mean it's not representative, or reflective of, of, of the yes voters and the no voters and all that, I mean, or, or, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with the sentiment that it's just seventeen percent, and we need to be careful either, I think that, to Mr. Friedman's point, I mean, we got a good chunk of the no voters, and, and overall, seventeen, seventeen percent, is that what it was?
I didn't calculate that now, it was-
Even if it's above-
It's about right, it's about right.
Yeah, even if it's above five, I mean, that's, above ten, that's a really good sampling, right? And, and yes-
I said it was about thirteen percent of the full registered voters, and yes, it would be considered an okay sample.
I, I think that's a terrific sample, and, and, and very actionable, and, and, and yeah, the higher you go, the, the more the distribution is accurate, but this, 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 I think, is, is, the respondent rate is, unless there's some kind of self-selecting thing for people who chose to take it or different than not, but I think it's a terrific sample.
In terms of, in terms of, just to respond to that really briefly, in terms of the kind of sample that we got, it really is an outstanding twenty-four, almost twenty-five hundred responses over the course of a little more than a month is really, really good. We say it's not statistically significant because we can't scrub the data the way, you know, a university might be looking at it, or the way a polling organization may be looking at it, because I'm not scrubbing it that way, and I'm, and the questions were not all asked in kind of the right, the best right way, if you will, in terms of purity. I also tried to calculate a p-value, but I, I ran out of time. So, if you wanted correlation.
So, so just some of the scientific approaches to designing questions and analyzing
Correct.
might not be there, but the-
Abundance of caution.
Fair enough.
That's what we're going, that's what I'm coming from, abundance of caution.
That leads me, I think, to my, my second point, and, and a couple of have made it, I think. For example, you know, just reacting at face value to some of the questions, right? The gentleman up front was saying, you know, people would support a five hundred dollar, but not a seven fifty, or whatever it is. It's, it's hard to take action on that, because the, the context really wasn't there, or might not have been there for people.
Yeah.
Similarly, the, the question that I think everybody liked, where, where do people get their information?
Mm-hmm. Question six.
I think one conclusion that might have been jumped to prematurely was, "Let's just confirmation bias." Right? Everyone's just talking to people they agree with, and that's represented by talking to neighbors, and social media is just an extension of that. The way I look at that is, that's, that's exactly what I would expect, because talking to your neighbors is the easiest thing to do, that's the most accessible, and so that bar is going to be the highest. Getting your information from a, a member of the Board of Selectmen, or the School Committee, or FinCom, or, or whatever, is going to be the lowest, just because there's less opportunity for that, there are twenty-five thousand people in the town. So how, how, you know, it's going to be much easier for somebody to get the information from a neighbor or on social media than talking to Barry Berman at the PTO meeting, right? It's, so I, I, yes, there's probably confirmation bias out there, but I'm not jumping to that conclusion from this data.
Well, confirmation bias is human nature.
Fair enough, yeah.
And I think that that's to be expected. And so I, I think, you know, you don't, we can agree to disagree on that, but I think that there's a lot of value in understanding how people garner information. It doesn't bad, it's just where, where, meet people where they're at.
To me, the question is, then how's, how's it actionable, right? So, and then that leads me to my last point, I think that the real value here, I think, is being able to then figure out some of the questions like, like Mark was asking, right? So how does, how does this particular group look at that, right? And really kind of zeroing in on how people think, really going beyond the surface of, you know, the five hundred dollars or whatever, confirmation bias, really drilling in, and then how does that inform your message? And, you know, and, and what, what narratives can you construct from the, from this data by, by kind of doing that, that, that level of analysis? I think there's a really rich opportunity for, for what we got here to do that.
I think you're absolutely right, and if you, as you go forward, and you, as the data gets released, and you come up with further questions along those lines, please submit them, because we can slice and dice that data right here, just as we've been doing.
Any other questions from any of the elected boards, way in the back? Hi, Jeff.
He's not elected, is that the note? Jeffrey Coram. I guess if I could glance at, question five was a little bit, I don't know, discouraging to me in that a bunch of the no voters said that the, the biggest thing that would convince them to vote for an override is if the selectmen and the school committee convinced them that the override was necessary. And to, to some extent, my, my feeling is that the selectmen and the school committee have a big job to do doing the rest of this stuff, and it's more incumbent on the people, the voters, to become informed. And I don't know to what extent the survey asked, "How many, how much time did you personally spend reading the reports, attending the meetings, reading the newspapers, you know, getting full information about it, as opposed to, "Oh, I don't want to pay any more money, you convinced me, I got to pay more," right? That almost the question said, "Oh, it is this board's, selectman's responsibility to go out and personally convince every person, all twenty-five thousand people in town, 'Oh, you need to vote for this,' right? That you've really cut everything where you possibly could." I mean, I've sat through a number of school committee, not as many Board of Selectmen meetings, but I've seen things that have been cut, and I'm convinced that there's a lot of cuts that we're not even going to get back with a number of these overrides. So, you know, I, I don't know, I, I just felt that the, how do we convince people that, you know, it's, it's not really so much the selectman's job to convince them, it's, you know, to put the information out, but how do we motivate people to, to read a little more, and invest a little more in, in preserving the services that are important to their town?
Jeffrey, we'll knock on doors together, have a-.
Okay. I did for, yes, for Reading, you know, last time, and, and not a lot of them, you know, people answered the doors, whether they were not home or not, but-
Maybe I won't go with you, I don't-
The other thing, in terms of sampling and things, I, we mentioned that the, the no voters were perhaps underrepresented in terms of the people, I think the other underrepresented would be the people that did not vote, in that such a big chunk of town did not vote at all.
That's fair, yeah, that's fair.
So I don't, I don't know what we would do with that, because, you know, some of them would, may never come out to vote for any, you know, municipal election, but-
Yeah, many of those folks indicated they weren't in town, or they didn't live here at the time, so they're sort of new people, and they're, you know, getting involved. And that we'll see in the comments.
Jeff, I think, just to respond to your first point, thinking back to the number of listening sessions that were done leading up to October of sixteen- of listening sessions that were done leading up to October of 16, and thinking about the conversation about prioritization that happened at, I forget what date it was. If you asked me back then, had we done enough promotion, had we done enough explaining, I would have said absolutely yes. I don't see how you do more than, what was it, John, 30 listening sessions? John Halsey?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? I don't, could we have done more? Perhaps, but not many more. And yet, this leads one to believe we were so far off the mark. So, I think, to me, the takeaway is, we've got to have a, a single story that's repeated more often, rather than more detail. I know that sounds counterintuitive, but I think the high-level summary is what's needed, and if people have questions, raise it. We went into all sorts of detail in 2016, and this would say we were totally ineffective, or largely ineffective, at reaching people, and to use their words, convincing people. We're going to have to do better, I get it. I'm guessing we're going to have to do more of a consistent message, rather than doing more deep dives in various cuts of the data. Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Oh, good.
Yes, yeah, anyone, at this point, of the elected boards have had their first dibs, please.
Amy Cole. I just, to Jeffrey's point, I've said this before, but I'll just say it again, I'd love to see this go around, a flyer from the town in everybody's bill of some kind. I know we got one, I think I got one twice for the senior tax relief, which was great, but I think we need that for the override, a very understandable, clear, as you said, high-level information sheet that there is a vote, what it's about, what the consequences will be in either direction. I also recently received a town email, and I don't think I had signed up for any list. It was about a development meeting, so maybe an email as well to residents, if that's available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the public, or anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
We have a taker.
Nessa Alvarado, Finance Committee, Grand Street. Will town employees and school employees be allowed to speak publicly about what the cuts will do to their departments or their particular jobs, or how the, what the potential for a failed override will affect them? Because that was one of the most powerful things that I've heard, is how this affects our teachers, how this affects our employees.
Yeah, during the month, first of all, police and fire have already presented previously to the board their current staffing and their proposals for improvements. We would expect to go through the rest of the departments in the month of December, as each of them come before us and talk through the budget. And I would expect the school committee to do the same, with their own prioritized list and in their own meetings.
Well, the conversations happen outside of meetings, because as we've just seen, community listening sessions and official town meetings are not necessarily where people are getting their information, so will they be allowed to speak more publicly in other venues?
What were you thinking specifically? Videos?
Perhaps videos or something, yeah.
I don't know, we'd have to talk to town council whether or not that's entertained in the modern era. I know 10, what was it, 2003 it was done, I don't know whether it would be entertained the same in 17.
Yeah, ethics violation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe the general rules say, from the ethics folks, that a town employee may advocate, but only on their own time, under no coercion from their employer, and without using any town resources. So, and I believe that those conditions were all met at the Yes for Redding meeting, when the teacher spoke. I think that was well-done and well-planned.
So, if a public safety officer, or a teacher, or a DPW worker is invited to a house party in the evening, and chooses to do that and talk about their job and how the budget can impact them, or the lack of an override might impact them, then that's okay.
They'll pay them overtime, that's all.
Right, they don't come in uniform, and they don't, so that, okay, well, that's more than where we were last year, so...
Will that be communicated to town and school, or other employees?
Here you go.
I have to take exception at some of the tone here. Employees have had free speech all their life. The one thing that we did not do in the past, that I finally reached the point of agreeing to, is public safety. Part of public safety is public confidence and public trust. We did not want to upset the public by saying, oh my God, you're totally unsafe. So, every year, the police and fire have presented their budget and been very transparent, but they have drawn a line in terms of comparison, drawing comparisons whether the community's for staffing, and they're voicing their own personal concerns. Last spring, that veil came off, so that is the exception. But otherwise, employees are always free to speak their mind. They have done so repeatedly at budget meetings. I don't know if they go out to have coffees at people's houses, but they're certainly welcome to. I have no problem with, and not all employees are going to share the same opinion, I might add. And that's fine. Again, it's a free country. I would say that I will still have some amount of reservation and caution on the public safety area in terms of detail. You know, some things the police do are not for public consumption, quite frankly, but in terms of the general concern of the chiefs, absolutely.
Thanks. To clarify, I hadn't meant that as a criticism, more just a general... Oh, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? In front?
Phil Donahue's on our way.
I thought it was Carol.
Who has a question?
Jerry.
Okay.
Merv Griffin, Phil Donahue. Oprah Winfrey's coming next.
What about Jerry Springer?
I have to make sure I don't, don't want this to wrap around anybody's feet or worse. So, one question I have with the one Redding comment, I think that's so important, because although the override is about dollars and cents, I think everything we know about what motivates people, strangely enough, isn't about dollars and cents. Extrinsic motivation doesn't prove all that motivating in the workforce, intrinsic motivation does. So, how do we help people see the message and tap into the fact that this isn't just about, if you don't vote for these $10, there might not be, you might not be able to throw out four bags of trash. How do we get deeper than that? How do we start to heal those divisions we've been talking about with the trust gap? Because I think until we figure out that message about neighbor and community, that, you know, what are we fighting for, I guess, was the great message, wasn't it, that Winston Churchill said? So, we have to figure that out, and we have to figure out how to tap into that for our neighbors and for ourselves, I think.
Great comment.
Any other comments or questions? That completes the material. I'm sorry?
I blocked your view. Here we have.
One thing about this survey that I think we need to take into consideration is, the sampling method is, there's an inherent response bias, so people who feel strongly no, or strongly yes, are going to do this.
Right.
Which means that there's probably a very large segment of the voting population that doesn't have a strong feeling. And those are the people who probably need to be reached the most. So, you may say, you look at this, and you see, oh, 50% of the people are kind of here. The reality might be that 80, 90% of the people are kind of, I could go yes, I could go no. But if you're all-in no, you did this survey at least once. If you're all-in yes, you found a way to do it more than once also, right? And I think we just need to be aware of that, where the people who are kind of on the fence, or voted how they felt that day, but aren't really married to one of the two positions, probably didn't do it. So, I think that's where we need to be careful about the statistical significance around it, and also, how much we read into the data.
Fair.
Thank you.
Last chance. Any other questions, comments? Going once, going twice?
We have a second taker.
Oh.
All right. There you are.
I wanted to follow up on Mr. Halsey's comment about the people not, saying that they had used public safety. I think to some extent, I mean, you know when you called 911, right? And I haven't in the past, you know, knock on wood, thank you. But, right? But, you know, we don't realize how much we've benefited from the public safety, that, you know, because the police officers pulled somebody over down there, they didn't come and do something, or, you know, they're maintaining traffic, you know, that the speed limits are monitored properly, or the, you know, people who come into town that are, you know, driving funny get pulled over before something happens, and you have to call 911 because of the accident. Whereas people clearly know when they walk into the library, they clearly know when they have students. I was actually surprised that so many people said they had done something with town clerk, because, you know, there are a couple of things I've done, wearing a different hat, or wearing Yes for Redding hat, where I have to file something with town clerk, but there's not a lot of people filing those things. I'm a little curious as to what everybody's doing at the town clerk's office.
People vote. The town clerk runs our elections, yeah, so I think, yeah. Registering the dog, or paying that really late dog fee. Yeah, no.
Yes, Bob.
Thank you. Thanks for coming, but to some large degree, you're the choir. What we really need to understand is, how do we communicate with people not in this room, that didn't come to any of the meetings, but they're quite happy to go out and vote no and answer surveys? A point was raised earlier, and I don't remember the numbers, I did them, is the yes, no, didn't votes. The didn't votes are vastly underrepresented here by an order of magnitude. How do you even get people to vote? How do you get people to be interested? We've kicked this idea around for 10 years. My predecessor used to say, you could put a message on, tie it up in a rock, throw it through a plate-grass window, and some people still wouldn't read it. I don't know how to communicate with all the people in this town that should be voting, and anyone's ideas on that are always most welcome. I think the thing we all learned the hard way, we had a tremendous amount of meetings like this last time, that's not effective. 14 years ago, there was a video produced that was very effective. Ah-ha, there's lesson number one. Let's do a video. We all do it once, millions of people can watch it hundreds of times. But any other ideas on communication are certainly most welcome. And again, town employees have to be careful how they communicate, other people don't. So, the use of social media is a little bit of a gray area in the law, and our employees will be very careful about using social media, because a comment can be misunderstood and taken in a whole different direction. But any way that people can think of how to communicate with their neighbors, I'm all interested in. And to Jane's point earlier, and perhaps some of the selectmen, anyone watching, if you have ideas, you have questions, Jane has a phenomenal ability to drill into the data. Once you see this in the next couple of days as data, you'll probably think of a lot of questions and other things you want to learn. And seeing the data won't be the same as Jane having the ability to combine and drill down, so please ask those questions. Townmanager@ci.redding MA.us is a good email, just look up Town Manager on the website, you'll find it.
Thank you.
From the Board of Selectmen, we've heard Winston Churchill, I'll quote Benjamin Franklin, "We either all hang together, or we hang separately." We have to figure out how to work together as a town. Franklin was worried about his life, but in some sense, the life of the students and the life of those residents are going to be impacted one way or the other. To the extent there have been perceptions in whether or not various organs in town have operated effectively, we need to make that clear, and we need to speak with one voice. I do think it would be most effective if all the, all the organs of town, or all the agency, all the elected boards within town, actually represented the same set of facts. I know that may be harder to do, but it would be easier to have 10 people say the same thing than 10 different versions of the same thing, because I think it gets confusing. And that's part of the reason, I think, that people said we weren't very effective, they heard it one way one time, and one way another time, and maybe distilling it down into one sheet of paper. But we definitely have to figure out how to speak with one voice, if we're going to act as one Redding. Up there, no other comments? Andrew.
I wanted to make sure that we mention the Yes for Redding group, that...
Hopefully, we'll be helping all of the elected boards get the same facts in a digestible format to the population, and get people out to vote. There, I think, they will be a key resource for all of the different boards and committees this year, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Thank you. Any other closing comments?
I just wanted, Bob, could you sort of review our upcoming events? We're getting into budget season, we will be talking about the override question in the early part of the year. I don't know if you have that handy, but can we review that?
If anyone has a calendar, the second and third weeks of December is at the, I think it's the 12th, 13th, yeah, 12th, 13th, Tuesday and Wednesday. Yeah, she's awesome. The 12th and 13th are the first two sets of department meetings with the selectmen. The 19th, most of the departments will have concluded by then, and the 20th is the enterprise funds and a discussion and a wrap-up. So, again, the December 12th, 13th, 19th, and 20th for the Board of Selectmen. I believe all three meetings, the first three meetings will be in the selectmen's meeting room, a town hall, and the fourth one maybe, and then the school committee meetings, you can see, are predominantly in January. All these meetings will be covered live on RCTV.
This is on the town website, right?
Yes, it is.
This is the town...
I just pulled up.
I saw the HTTP. Does this get me out of Christmas shopping, all those meetings?
Amazon Prime.
Thanks. I don't have to give you any...
One more question? Two more. Two more questions.
That's the other, I had him shut off the other, what's...
Hi. You had discussed at a previous Board of Selectmen meeting, having a meeting on January 30th, and you had said that you would decide by that time whether or not to put an override on the ballot, and what the amount would be, so I'm surprised not to see it on that calendar. It's January 30th was the date that you had agreed to.
Well, the school committee will come forward with their numbers by the 19th, right?
And then you have a financial form.
That's correct. We also have the financial form on the 24th.
January 24th.
Yeah, most likely it would end up on the 24th. I mean, the 30th, it's in that region. We need to wait until the school committee comes forward, but be it the 24th of January, the 30th of January, it's the latter.
It may happen the 24th.
Yeah, it'd be the latter half of January, most likely the 24th meeting.
But it would not happen after the 30th.
I don't want to predict the future, but our intention is, the minute we get the data, and it's been digested, we can respond.
And I think also...
We're voting on the 18th, so the data will be available by then.
Right.
Okay.
Bob, when is the Town Manager's budget effectively finalized? Here.
That's what that says.
24th?
No, he's received...
He gets it on the 19th.
But when is it actually, you know, digested by you and reissued in final form?
I charter it's owed March 1st, we agree to speed it up a month. So, if you see that February 1st date, that's when I will present the balanced budget for all departments to FinCom. I purposely put that after the 24th, in case there was some discussion.
So, if that's, Bob, if that's what your intention is, is to present the balanced budget on that date, I don't see how we can...
Yeah. There will be a balanced budget going into the 24th, but it may change, depending on how the discussion goes on the 24th.
So, to Aaron's point, we may need to schedule something on the 30th.
Correct.
Because the 24th, you know, sounds like is when all the, all the, you know, the data comes in to us.
Well, what I would picture is, you're going to have a balanced budget sooner than the schools will.
Oh, yeah, we're...
The schools will vote, I would hope, a balanced budget on the 19th, we'll see. On the, or on the 18th, sorry. On the 24th, the finance committee can weigh in as to whether they have a different opinion on the use of free cash, which they've done every year, or many years, I should say. That's, to me, the only thing that would change the balanced budgets that are in front of you. So, I don't think there's a whole lot of discussion, assuming, if I may speak for John, I know we've talked about this, we each have a list of add-backs prioritized, shouldn't take a long discussion. Certainly, you can meet on the 30th if you need to, not a problem.
That list of add-backs, you see that on the 24th at the financial form?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay. So I think it's either be the 24th or the 30th if we need to. Somewhere in that--
I think we should plug it in, plug in the 30th. And the reason I say that is on the 24th, we receive, you know, we're going to, there's going to be predictable discussion about the use of free cash. And that could, that could vary based on what comes out of the school committee on the 18th or 19th. I guess what I'm saying is on the 24th, there's a lot of variables. And personally, because it becomes the Board of Selectmen's job to make a decision to put one, to put an override on or not and to put, and what amount it's going to be. I would rather be able to do that with kind of a fresh start on the 30th. If we have to spend two hours talking through that, three, I don't care how long it takes. I'd like it to be the sole top, like tonight. This is, this is very productive when we have essentially one thing to do. And I, and I just would suggest that we plug that 30th in. If we don't need it, it's, you know, it's not a bad thing. But if we reserve it, it gives us the opportunity to have a dedicated discussion without distraction.
Yeah, the 30th is a Tuesday night, so it'll either be Wednesday, the 24th, or Tuesday, the 30th. So that should be enough accuracy at this point in the calendar.
John?
Yes.
Could we get that up on the website? I'm just thinking of, you know, the trust issue, transparency. I want people, I want the public to know that we may be voting on the override on the 24th or the 30th so, so they can attend our meeting or, just so they're, so it's very clear to everyone what we're doing in, in the timeframe.
Is this not directly from the website?
It is, but the 30th--
The details--
Yeah, there's no--
Yeah. You know, once it's clarified, I think it's pretty simple to add on this day.
Yep.
This is what it's--
I don't think you need to do it today.
No, 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 no.
I get your point. Sorry, is there another question?
Yes, there is.
Hey, George.
George Captain Colvin wrote, "I would like to suggest, based on the comments where everyone wanted to have more details, and also know that all the boards have gone through a vetting process in terms of the different options and the impact when you add it all together in terms of any increase in the tax rate and what the override would be." And so my suggestion would be is that at some stage in these deliberations, that you show, here's the level services budget, here is what we'll do to take public safety if we add one fireman, one policeman, and one unit of schools, whatever that unit may represent. And then two units for each of the departments. And have the different options. And then it comes up with whether it's a $500 increase on the average house or $250 or whatever it is. What that would show, and here's how the different boards deliberate it, and then show what the impact will be in three years, five years. Will you need another override in five years? I mean, if you have a large, I mean, the principle, I believe, in the last time, let's have a large one to cover for the next, I don't know, eight, 10 years.
Eight to 10.
People didn't like that, okay? But if you do a lesser amount, maybe you need another override in five years. But if you lay it out, have the details, what's the impact? What will we lose? What will we lose in terms of students getting a proper education? What will we lose in terms of public safety? I mean, right now, when the chiefs presented at the meeting, they said that they get a lot of support from other towns. But sometimes, with COVID, prices and everything else, we can't do that maybe in the future. So look at the different options, lay it out clearly. Here's our different choices, here's the impact. If you do that on one page, here's what we lose.
You heard the town manager speak about a balanced budget and then these add backs. That's exactly the concept. You'd have an add back on the town and an add back on the school side. It's that concept.
That spreadsheet has actually been built, George. The one you're talking about that shows, you know, cost per fireman, cost per, you know.
It's a lot simpler.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
I love spreadsheets.
Yes.
One thing that I haven't heard discussed tonight that I'm very interested in is that all the cards will be on the table for any override discussion because it looks like we've got some big capital projects coming down the road. And that's going to impact how people feel about paying more money for more services, even if they want the services, because some of those capital projects, we may have no choice in doing. And that's going to, if you have $500 extra in your budget to give, anybody in a household would say, what's the priority for that, spending that money? And so that's going to impact the number as well, the override number.
Yeah, the financial forum, one, the town manager presented a list of additional capital items and some items in the not-too-distant future that would impact the capital plan. I presume they'll be part of the same discussions we have in December. They'll all be clarified, restated.
And all those capital items have a life of their own and a different timeline of their own and a cost of their own. And so I agree, you need to sort of lay them all out. And some of them are going to be needed, but they might not be for five years down the road. So then in your mind, you have to say, okay, will I not vote for the override now because five years from now I might have to do this? So it's important that they know, you know, the magnitude, the timing, the decision process so that, you know, and that, and that stuff changes all the time, too, so.
I mean, one of the conversations for the last override, when I was in the public meeting, was people were saying, why are you bringing up an override when we, we all agreed, you know, between themselves that Killam was the next project they want to spend money for? So people have to understand when we're going to spend money, why we're going to spend money, because the capital, you know, hasn't been funded fully because of the constraints we've been under. And there's going to be a breaking point when we're going to have to focus on the capital. And that's going to be taken into consideration with the other operating override personnel, so.
As well as projects roll on the plan, projects roll off the death plan. So there is a balance there, and we try to make things balanced.
Any other last questions? Yes, Linda.
It's actually not a question, just to thank you. I wanted to thank RCTV because they make these meetings and all this information available. And to highlight for those watching on TV and those not able to come here, you can watch the RCTV recordings on YouTube whenever you have a moment. So I know it's taken me days sometimes to watch whole meetings, but RCTV makes it possible to watch those and get firsthand information. So I just wanted to thank RCTV for doing that. I hope that the kids at the high school who have the new RCTV program get involved in getting the information out. And use YouTube so you can really get the information, stop, re-listen to something you don't hear well at your leisure. So thank you.
And all their YouTube stuff is HGTV quality. You won't see that on your TV at all, so.
I'd also like to thank the schools for making the library available. This is actually a pretty nice setting. It's pretty quiet acoustically and it seats quite a few people. I see a lot of empty seats, however.
If there are no other comments, I'm going to suggest we accept a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute. Yes.
Ah, thank you. Let's see, there's a proposal to--
Back to your note here.
Yeah, proposal to generate a proclamation for a resident of Sanborn Place.
Eloise.
Eloise Shannon.
Lovey Shannon.
Lovey.
She was recognized a week ago. She's age 104. And the thought is we should recognize our, our senior citizens, and this is an individual that's well-loved. It's a sense of the group.
Absolutely.
I move that we would have a proclamation declaring a day in her honor in Reading.
Do you have a day in mind, John?
Yes, the meeting, we're still in business.
It's part of our meeting.
Yeah, it's part of our--
Survey discussion portion of the evening has ended. Thank you for coming.
I would suggest that next Saturday be, be that day. She will be present at the Thanksgiving celebration that's hosted by the two reps. And I would suggest that we declare that day in her honor and present to her that proclamation. I've brought greetings from our board at her birthday party already, so.
Will somebody be able, from the board, be able to attend? Because that's when we're celebrating Thanksgiving, that day.
Yeah, well, we're, I'm going to be there.
That's the 25th, John, right? Saturday?
No, the Saturday.
The 18th, the 18th. Okay, we have a motion to generate a proclamation for Eloise Shannon and be delivered on the 18th. All those in favor?
Okay.
5-0. Understand the motion to adjourn?
Ask a question about Friday night or we go to trivia night or not?
What's the will of the board to entertain a presence at RCTV on Friday night for trivia night?
It's at, where is it at?
I believe it's at RCTV.
I'm concerned about, given the, given the climate, I'm very concerned about the thought of open public meeting law.
If we don't deliberate--
Well, that was the thought the last time.
Then if we, if we don't give opinions about town business--
I guess we'll have to post it.
Or can you--
Subject to posting, who's interested?
Yeah, so you can post it.
If I post you tomorrow--
How'd you get over here?
Wait a minute.
I was really mad.
You just walked through.
Town council suggested going forward--
Pardon me?
Town council has suggested going forward, if there's ever a form of a board at any event, it should be posted. And if, for instance, you attend to, plan to attend a public meeting and it's not posted, you don't attend.
Prior to the--
So like--
Run the line a little stronger in the sand.
So like, for example--
We can't attend and not say it. That is, frankly, that's why--
They can't think to that. But what about, what about like Veterans Day?
That's not a public meeting, so that's different. That's an event. But if it's a public--
Events and chance meetings are accepted, I think. If you go to MMA.
You could all go to dinner.
That doesn't have to be--
You shouldn't discuss business, but it's not a public--
So, so what are you saying about Friday? Because this seems to be a recurring theme.
No, Friday's not a public meeting. It's not.
Saturday.
Saturday's not a public meeting.
The birthday. All the Thanksgiving.
That's a dinner.
It's not a public meeting. I mean, like a FinCom event, a school committee meeting.
Saturday, earlier in the day.
You know, if three of you show up at a school committee meeting, budget meeting, it's got to be posted.
Any other posted meeting, effective?
Any other posted.
Right. So we can go to the trivia night without posting?
Well, we should post it anyways, just--
As long as you win.
Well, what time will you be there?
I'm not going to the trivia.
Oh, yeah, I think you need to.
He's interested in going Friday night.
What time is it at?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I'll, I'll say yes.
Okay, I'll say yes. I'll contribute regardless.
Yeah, I'll make the best effort to get there. Where is it again? The studio?
RCTV, yeah.
What is the cost table or whatever?
It's a six--
Seven.
It's a six-person table. I think we need a ringers.
Hey, are you interested in going?
You're on camera.
I'll, I'll, my treat. You have better things to do on a Friday night.
What am I talking about? Come on.
All right, as long as you don't rely on me to win.
You know, you have a three-time winner for time, we'll tell her.
What's the cost per head? Who do we--
So you?
Reading trivia, I think, pretty good.
Phil, you're listening, how much?
General trivia, I don't know.
$25 a person.
All right. All right, I can handle that.
I will gladly contribute.
And, and it won't be that long if we're out in the first round, right?
No throwing.
You realize we're broadcasting this, right? All right, I guess we have at least three and perhaps four, so that should be fine.
Okay.
Friday at 7:00.